I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. It's 6:30 PM. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are on the agenda of the meeting. If members of the public would like to comment on an agenda item, either virtually or in person, they were to have emailed their comments or their request to speak to the city recorder prior to noon today. And individuals attending in person may submit a speaker card to the city recorder at the beginning of the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city council will also have Gladstone City event announcements during the meeting and business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during either time, virtually or in person, again, you were to have emailed the city recorder or filled out one of the cards. And comments are limited to three minutes there, too. Haley, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee?
Present.
Counselor Mitchell?
Present.
Counselor Blaug?
Present.
Counselor Labonte?
Present.
Counselor Garlington?
Present.
Mayor Milch?
Present. Please stand for the flag salute.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, we have a vacant seat up here, and we're going to remedy that right now. Administrator beds?
And the charter and municipal code of the city of Gladstone, and that I will, okay, sorry, and the charter and municipal code of the city of Gladstone, and I will, to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability,
perform the duties of city councillor for the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
Perform the duties of city councillor for the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term.
During my entire term.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Counselor Corbett. The city of Gladstone recently instituted a process for proclamations, and I have two to read tonight. Whereas the city of Gladstone is committed to the core values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and desires to cultivate a sense of belonging for all residents. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, non-binary, and asexual LGBTQ+ people are members of the Gladstone community. And whereas Pride Month is celebrated in the month of June to honor the 1969 Stonewall riots in New York City that were sparked in response to ongoing police harassment of New York's gay community, and were also the catalyst for establishing safe places for gay and lesbian people to be open about their sexual orientation without fear of being arrested or imprisoned. And whereas the city of Gladstone strives to be a welcoming and safe place where people, families, and institutions thrive, and the contributions of all are celebrated and valued. And whereas the city of Gladstone's support of LGBTQ+ Pride Month reflects a commitment to being an ally and to supporting marginalized people's rights to love, joy, and expression. Now therefore be it resolved. I, Michael Milch, mayor of the city of Gladstone, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of Gladstone in support of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, non-binary, and asexual family, friends, and neighbors. And declare that love is love, you are valued and welcome, and your city stands with you. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 10th day of June 2025. Michael Milch, mayor of Gladstone, Oregon. And the second proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one-half years to June 19, 1865, in reaching authorities, African-American, and Black slaves in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas June 19 has a special meaning to Black and African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated for over 150 years. And whereas Juneteenth is a day of reflection and a day of renewal, it is a moment in time to appreciate not only the Black and African-American experience, but it is inclusive of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities. And whereas Juneteenth-centered activities have taken place to promote and cultivate knowledge and appreciation of Black and African-American history and culture. And whereas Juneteenth is a day that we can come together as a community to listen, to learn, to refresh the drive to achieve, it is a day where we can come one step closer to better utilize the energy wasted on racism. Now therefore be it resolved. I, Michael Milch, mayor of the city of Gladstone, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in Gladstone, an annual celebration of the past, present, and future of Black and African-American liberation. And I urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in Black and African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 10th day of June 2025. Michael Milch, mayor of Gladstone, Oregon. And we have a member of the community who is asked to say a few words at this time. Kelly Chaney. Push the little button so the red light comes on. Here you go.
Hi, my name's Kelly Chaney. I'm a longtime resident of Gladstone. And I wanted to thank the majority vote for issuing these proclamations. I want to invite everyone next Thursday to the park at 6:30 for a Juneteenth celebration, just led by the community. There'll be hot dogs, free hot dogs and snacks, and bring chairs and blankets, and just get to know your community members and talk about some of the things that were mentioned in that proclamation. We're going to have a reading of the Emancipation Proclamation, which is just something I wanted to mention real quick because what the mayor just described about it taking two and a half years for the word to be spread was because local governments wouldn't do their job. Local governments would not spread the news, and Black people in this country were enslaved over two more years than necessary. So these communications are very important. And they're not, this is not an anti-white proclamation. The Pride proclamation is not an anti-straight proclamation. I may submit a proclamation for Left-handed Day on August 13th. That is not an anti-right-handed proclamation. It just means the world's set up for right-handed people. Your gear shift, your computer mouse, everything, every day is right-handed day. Just like every day is straight day and every day is white day. So people need to realize this is not, these aren't anti-movements, they're pro-movements. And there was commentary that this took five years because people didn't care. But we fought for this for five years. A lot of people in this room, I mean, the most well-attended council meetings over the last five years were regarding these human rights issues. And so I'm so glad that we've made this step, and I hope to see everybody next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Now I'd like to call on our police chief, John Schmerber, to introduce some special people in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Everybody here be okay if I stand up or not, sit down.
You can push the button so that your voice will be captured for the recording.
Okay, how's this?
That's great.
Does that work? It's a great night. Sergeant Orr couldn't be here. He was going to actually do the introduction for our cadets. He did a lot of work behind the scenes. Unfortunately, we're really busy, and he's out in the field right now, so he's taking care of that. So it's going to be sewn on to me to introduce these fine young people. After an extensive preparation and hard work behind the scenes, mostly by Sergeant Orr, I am thrilled to introduce the newest branch of the Gladstone Police Department, our very own cadet program. The police cadet program is designed to offer youth and young adults firsthand experience and training in the field of law enforcement. This takes place while working individually or as a team to develop confidence and leadership skills that benefit a career choice, not just law enforcement. Our cadet program looks to achieve these goals through mentorship, classroom instruction, hands-on training, and experiences. Our cadets must attend the Clackamas County Interagency Cadet Academy prior to being involved in any event or assignment, which all of our cadets currently have. This includes being pepper sprayed and going through an obstacle course of sorts. I'm not sure they appreciated the pepper spray, but... Any training they participate in with the Gladstone Police Department is overseen by either a certified discipline instructor, such as firearms, defensive tactics, et cetera, or by cadet advisor, which is an officer or sergeant assigned specifically to work with cadets. The current advisors are Sergeant Eric Graves, our school resource officer Robbie Teague, and Sergeant Orr. Cadets will participate in various uniform detail assignments, fundraisers, ride-alongs, and community engagement events throughout the city. Our cadets have already done so, participating in the Drug Take Back Shred event, along with the bike rodeo. I think you saw some of that on our Facebook posts, if you follow us. These activities provide cadets with the practical experience and exposure to daily operations and responsibilities of public service professionals. There is also an annual competition held with Clackamas County for cadets to put their skills on display, competing with other cadet explorers from around the state with the knowledge they've gained from the program. If any of you know me, I'm pretty competitive, so I want us to win. So at this time, I would like each one of the cadets to introduce themselves. So can you guys please?
Hi, I'm Jacob Denly. I'm a senior at Gladstone High School, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this program.
Hi, my name's Madison Yingling. I am a senior at Gladstone High School, and I'm grateful to be a part of this.
Hi, I'm Kai Kryava. I'm a sophomore at Gladstone High School, and I've had a really good experience, and I can't wait to be with you.
Hi, I'm Ben Anderson. I'm a junior at Gladstone High School, and I can't wait to serve my community even more.
So, council, here's our newest cadets.
We have one more presentation before we get to the regular agenda for the meeting tonight. Greg Geist from Water Environment Services is here. And I think we have a video presentation on that as well.
Should be a PowerPoint?
Yep.
Welcome, Greg. Thank you for coming.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and councilors. Thank you. I think this is my sixth year coming here for annual report. My name's Greg Geist. I work for Clackamas Water Environment Services. We provide sanitary sewer treatment services for Gladstone. Get started. I will say I have my notes this year. Not everybody's here last year, but I forgot my notes last year, so. Like that? Okay. Oh. Okay. So for those of you who don't know Wes, I won't read our mission, but our vision is to be a collaborative partner in building a resilient, clean water future where all people benefit and rivers thrive. And since I became the director in 2016, that's really been my focus, is being that collaborative partner. We're out in the community, we're working with the cities, we're working with community groups, and really getting integrated. Our business for decades was literally out of sight and out of mind, buried in the street. And it's expensive stuff, and it's important infrastructure. So we've really tried to bring ourselves out of our shells, which is part of the reason that I do these at all the cities each year. So we provide a variety of different services depending on where you live in our service district. For Gladstone, you guys own and operate your own collection system, pump stations for sanitary sewer, and you take care of your own stormwater needs. For folks like Happy Valley and unincorporated Clackamas County that's urbanized, we provide all of those services. So depending on where you live, it depends on what kind of service we provide. And we provide service to about 190,000 people, all the way from the far reaches of Happy Valley down to Milwaukee and down Oregon City, Westland, Gladstone, and kind of everything in between. A little bit of some numbers. We actually operate five different, what we call water resource recovery facilities, because what we do is we take what goes down toilets, and we make three things. We make clean water that goes back out to the river for downstream uses. We make electricity, which I'll share a little bit. And we make a biosolid fertilizer that goes out to eastern Oregon for agricultural fields. So we recover those resources that are flushed down the toilet. Seven billion gallons of water treated per year, well over 350 miles of pipe, and 23 pump stations, including one that we recently just remodeled, rebuilt in Gladstone, that I'll talk a little bit about. Structurally, we have an advisory committee, 20-member advisory committee that consists of elected folks from all of the cities that we serve. We have business owners, we have educational interests, we have environmental nonprofit interests. So we have an advisory committee that's really based on a cross-section of the community that we serve and the interests that they have. I also wanted to shout out to Christopher Baucher. Mayor Milch is our elected representative on that body, and Gladstone resident Christopher Baucher is also there, and a great member, very engaged. As far as your ratepayer dollars, 62% goes into running the facility across the street and the other facilities that we have across the county or across the river, I should say. We have debt payments and then infrastructure financing and reserves. And I'm going to talk about some of the focus on some of the bigger projects that we're working on right now that are infrastructure-related. One other thing. Oh, yeah. And now I'll talk about some of those projects, but first we'll talk about rates. We're proposing to increase rates 5% this fiscal year, $1.55 per month. And you can see the rate increases that we've had. Modest predictable rate increases is what we're shooting for. We don't want, we've had a policy of, you know, well, we have, well, I'll talk more about that later. But we have consistently had predictable modest rate increases. And as I'll show you later, we're in a very good financial position to build what we need to build when we need to build it and have the money to pay for it. And we're also well below the regional average for the services that we provide, which we're proud of. All right. We also recently revamped our system development charges. We redid our methodology and reset the number based on our five-year capital improvement plan. Today, we're at $9,100, and we're proposing to go up to what we call the full, the fully loaded CIP amount, which is 12,285 over the next 10 years. There will be some public hearings. This is a public process. And I don't, I think it's, I think it's August 9th or 12th, but I can get back to you if folks are interested in that. So again, very modest, about 3% per year increases in the system development charges that we charge for new homes. And the stormwater STC does not apply in Gladstone, so you don't need to pay attention to that. Oh, I wrote it down. It's August 14th, public hearing. Thank you. So I mentioned planning for the future. We have, well, shortly after I became the director and we kind of reformed into our current structure, it gave us the ability to plan long-term. And so we did a series of master plans for our collection system, for our facilities, for our stormwater system, everything, all of our infrastructure that look out 20 to 40 years for what we expect for growth, what's going to wear out, what's going to need replaced, even some future regulatory requirements that we might anticipate. And that's kind of our roadmap moving forward. And then we matched that with a capital improvement plan. We have about a 12-year capital improvement plan that is married to that and a long-term financial plan. So that's us in a nutshell. So we look 20 to 40 years out for the infrastructure, and we plan at least 10 years out for how we're going to deliver that infrastructure. And next I'll talk about some projects we're working on. Hopefully, some folks here and in the room heard about our Clackamole project. That's a new outfall that takes our treated effluent from our facility across the river out to the Willamette and discharges there. Our current outfall is about seven feet in diameter, or no, six maybe, five and a half. Anyway, it's nearing capacity, and so we are installed well. We're in the process of installing a seven-foot diameter additional pipe that runs along I-205. And as part of that project, we got to have a little bit of fun because about a half mile of that, that alignment needed to be bored with using a tunnel boring machine. So that's the Clackamole, and it's an industry practice, I guess, to have a naming of those machines. And so we got, gosh, I can't remember now, hundreds of community suggestions. Chuck Boris was one of them that I kind of liked. But anyway, we landed on Clackamole, and we completed that tunneling portion of that project just a few months ago, but we got through the scary part. We did get it stuck for about a week and a half, just on the other side of the Highway 99, I-205 interchange. If it would have got stuck 50 feet back, it would have been right in the middle of six lanes plus of traffic, and it would have been a nightmare. But that's not where it happened. We were able to drill down to and free up the tunnel, the face of it, and continue out onto the river. We didn't have any more problems. Another big projects that we're working on, I said we plan for the long term. This series of projects, it's called the Clackamas Area Interceptor Improvement Project. It's going to be in phases. We're going to begin this work, essentially expanding our capacity to take Happy Valley growth in the future along the 212 corridor. And we begin that work in 2026, and it's scheduled to be completed in 2036. Oh, actually, I'll have you, can I go? Yeah. So if you look to the left of this figure, you'll see the lows. There's where the red line and the black box are. That's our inner tie pump station. So the way that we're handling future growth in Happy Valley and current flows that are coming from Happy Valley is they essentially run by gravity. They would normally have gone down to our facility in Milwaukee called our Kellogg Creek facility, but that facility is at capacity. So we have an inner tie there near the lows. We're in a massive pump station in Wetwell that pumps that through a pressurized pipe all the way down to our facility here, roughly along I-205 and Johnson Road. So we're going to be doing an expansion of that, and you're going to see it because it's going to be in Gladstone. The original pipe was put in in 2011, and they, to their credit, through some of the large intersections and the environmentally sensitive areas, they went ahead and put a second pipe in next to the pipe that we're using now. Now we're going back into the sections that weren't constructed in 2011 and connecting the whole thing up to improve or increase capacity. That's going to be very visible, and these are the sections that we're looking at. So the black line there along I-205 is already in the ground, but the yellow sections are the ones, and we're starting essentially now to do this work. We've already had some road closures up on Johnson Road. And we are going to be in downtown Gladstone. Let me see. Essentially, from the Safeway to the bridge. And we already have pipe on the ground on the other side of the bridge to get from the bridge to our facility. But yeah, essentially, the mid-September or mid-October is when we're going to be having road work. We went through all the permitting process. We have all the traffic plans in place. We've, I had a new employee the other day that happens to live in that area, and he got the flyer that we sent out saying this was going to happen and when it was going to happen. So we're trying to do everything we can to make it be no surprises. But I've learned in this business that no matter what you do, somebody will say, "I've never heard of this, and I was never contacted." So we're doing our best to avoid that and work closely with Silas and others at the city to... Yeah. If I may ask, for about, approximately, how long do you think you'll be? In down, so on the other side of the bridge, from essentially Safeway to the bridge, about a month. From mid-September to mid-October. We work hard on energy. Our mantra is use less, make more. We do make electricity. We take the solids material that comes into our facility. We put it into what we call a digester, which is, we have three over a million-gallon tanks. We heat those tanks. They act like a stomach, and they make methane gas. And we burn that in a high-efficiency engine, and it's capable of powering about half of our facility, which is a lot of power. We spend over $1 million a year on electricity. This past year, we reduced our energy consumption by 4.1%, which is, we're pretty proud of. And we got paid to do it from Energy Trust. These are some quick wins. You can, you know, some of this stuff is pretty specific to us, like fix the leaks. That's our, we have a compressed air system, and fixing those leaks means that our generator isn't running as much as the heat pressure in that system. But things like turn it off, tune it up. If you go to the Energy Trust of Oregon's website, they have some really good residential tips for folks to make it a habit. Anyway, a lot more to learn on that. Oops. This is the engine that I was talking about. Need to say much more about that. But yeah, this is the make more energy part. And like I said, we're capable of producing up to 50% of the power. And then I want to talk about partnering with Gladstone. We, I think, I don't know that we've cut a check yet, but we are actively working with the city on the inflow and infiltration work that's going on throughout the city. We have a Good Neighbor Fund that we continue to work with. Oh, I did want to mention, so I was working with Jackie. There's some stainless steel cabinets on this side of the 82nd Drive Bridge that got graffiti on them. I don't know if you've gotten complaints, but we're working with the city, and we have the materials on the way to paint those, put in anti-graffiti coating, or clean them up, anti-graffiti coating, and we'll keep a close eye on those. They're very visible, and when I saw the pictures, it was embarrassing. We're supporting Gladstone Movies in the Park, Gladstone Community Festival. We're also both, we've had a long-term relationship with Solve, doing, we call it our Summer Waterways Cleanup Series. And we started that at Meldrum Bar this year, and we're going to finish up at High Rocks. And that's going to be Wednesday, October 15th, from 10 to noon at the High Rocks facility or location. And then we're working closely with Silas and the Public Works on the 82nd, what we call the 82nd Drive pump station. I think you got Barton, maybe? Anyway, to rehabilitate a Gladstone pump station. And we've been working closely with that for over a year now. Got to tour the new Public Works facility. That was fun. Thank you for that. And then the other thing, I mentioned that we, oops, there we go. This is the, what we call the Gladstone Pump Station. It was built in the 80s. This is the glad, what we call the Gladstone Pump Station. It was built in the eighties and it was showing its age and we completely new, new pumps, new controls, new, new everything. And so we're pretty proud of that. And we are doing an open house for that facility. Wednesday, July 9th from four to 6:00 PM. You're all invited and we'll make sure, if you haven't seen an email or invitation, you will. It should be fun. Yeah. We're very proud of the work that we do for Gladstone and all the communities that we serve. And I would just invite you to especially new folks to come take a tour with us. You'll be surprised, I guarantee it. And, and hopefully a little bit impressed because it's a pretty impressive industrial facility over there and we, and we're very proud of it. And that's all I have. I, I will, you know, close by saying I, I feel very fortunate as the director of West. Like I said, we know we've done the planning, we've done the, the, the work to get our rates where we need them. We know what we need to build, when we need to build it and how we're going to pay for it. And for a utility, really anywhere in the country, to be able to say that these days is kind of extraordinary. So blessed. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any questions for members of the council? Councilor Garland.
I just have one. You had mentioned that you have a million dollar electricity bill per year. Is that before or after you make your electricity?
After.
After. Thank you.
And I do have some flyers. Oh wait. For the, for the open house. I'll give them to Jackie.
May follow up with that, the energy point. I know that, um, my understanding is there's some in pipe turbine technology for electricity generation. Is that something that's explored with Wes or is that more on the, not so much on the waste end?
We, well, we have, we don't have the head pressure for that. I know that Gresham, the city of Gresham, their treatment plant sits up kind of high and they looked at that tech nine, they discharged down into the Columbia. They looked at it there and they're a net zero facility. They've got some things on their side that allow them to, to do that, that are challenges for us. But part of that is the gravity part of their system. They've got a lot of, a lot of slope. But no, we haven't looked at that. We do things like strategic energy management where we're constantly looking for, we call them treasure hunts, finding ways to save energy. We're also going to participate in a energy demand response program that PGE is starting. So in the heat of the summer or during an ice storm or something, we can turn off equipment for certain periods of time, save power and help the grid. And, and we get reimbursed for that. So we're always thinking of ways and every construction project that we do, we work with Energy Trust of Oregon and PGE and try to find partners to, to be more efficient.
Council Blough.
Do you have a low income abatement program?
Yes, we do. And we were, we have a strategic, we have a strategic plan as well. And one of our strategic goals, I forget the percentage, but is to increase participation in that. And finding creative ways. It's, it's difficult to get to renters. It really is.
Council Huckabee.
Thank you. Can you touch a little bit on the good neighbor program?
Yeah. So that's a fund that we established four years ago now or so. And we had one at our Milwaukee facility and, and it, it's a fund that pays for projects in a certain geographic area. In this case, it's kind of all up and down the, the Clackamas out to Meldrum Bar, down into Oregon City. That are, you know, hopefully have some kind of environmental benefit, but you know, bike ped stuff, signage, environmental education opportunities, playgrounds. Yeah, we just want to be, we know that we stink sometimes, frankly. And so we want to be a net, a net benefit for the people that live around us.
Well, appreciate, we have benefited from that program. You mentioned playgrounds specifically, and we have some ideas for other projects as well. It's been a privilege to serve on your advisory board. And as you demonstrated tonight, one of the great things about Wes is that their staff always has great answers to questions. Is on top of a lot of issues. I've been very impressed with the leadership financially, long range planning and, and your directorship as well. So it's been a pleasure to work with you and we always appreciate you coming and sharing with us. So thank you for visiting us tonight.
Thank you very much. I've, I've hired well.
All right. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, unless there are any additions or corrections to tonight's meeting agenda, administrator bets.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. So let me read that. Our consent agenda includes these items. Approval of the April 22nd, 2025 joint meeting with Clackamas Fire District Board and the May 13th, 2025 regular minutes. Approval of April bank balances, the budget report for the period ending April 30th, 2025. Approval of the April check register, legal costs for the month of April, 2025. Department head monthly reports for May 2025. And approval of a personal services contract between the city of Gladstone and Amy Lindgren as the city's municipal judge. Would any member of the city council like to pull any items from this consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second in.
All right. It's been moved by Councilor Huckabee and seconded by Councilor Mitchell that we approve the consent agenda. Haley, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Blough?
Yes.
Counselor Labonte?
Yes.
Counselor Corbett?
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The consent agenda is approved as presented. Do we have any correspondence?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. So we reached the time in the meeting where we have Gladstone City event announcements. Has anyone requested to provide an event announcement?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to call your attention to the Juneteenth gathering that Kelly Chaney mentioned earlier. There are some flyers about it out in the hallway. So we move now to our regular agenda, which tonight will include the second reading of ordinance 1539 designating the city of Gladstone's town center area. Ordinance 1541, new terms and conditions for continuation of an exclusive franchise agreement with Gladstone disposal, B and B leasing. And resolution 1240 requesting the Clackamas Fire District accept the city of Gladstone into the fire district. So item number nine, the ordinance 1539. We have the, the record of our previous deliberations on this is in the minutes and the full record of the hearings and so on, on this item are part of the packet tonight. We voted on this last month and we did not get a unanimous vote. So we are required to do a second reading tonight. And would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I will make a motion that we approve ordinance 1539 adopting the proposed Gladstone Town Center and text amendments as recommended by the city staff and planning commission.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilor Garland and seconded by Councilor Huckabee. Is that right? Okay. All right.
Do we need that text number on there or no? Because it's written, we're fine.
You can go ahead and add that in.
Adding file number TXT dash two, five, dash zero, two.
Okay. And I'll look to Council Huckabee. You're happy with adding that language. Okay.
Yes.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
If I.
Counselor Labonte.
May comment. I've been a part of this process essentially the whole time, the town center. Dovetail on the downtown revitalization. I know I am in, I believe in the minority with my vote here. I do believe that this we lose some of our city sovereignty. And that more of this area being in the town center, we will lose the ability to make certain, to, to control that area in a way that we might want to. I still believe that the, the parking is going to be a big issue, especially where folks aren't considering the, the river where when we have parking in an area, it disperses, we have a river blocking that. So that's going to move that parking more into the core. And I do believe that this is a first attempt at a town center. I would not be shocked in two or four years from now, if we're looking at a much larger area for the town center. My argument has always been to go slow. I believe it is, went off the rails from the beginning in some ways. I do not support this. I do support businesses. I do support downtown revitalization. But I do not support this particular ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for putting your comments on the record. Any other discussion? All right. Haley, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Blough?
Yes.
Counselor Labonte?
No.
Counselor Corbett?
Yes.
Counselor Garland?
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Okay. By a vote of six to one, let me put that on the record. Next item is consider approval of ordinance 1541 and ordinance adopting new terms and conditions for continuation of an exclusive franchise granted to the Gladstone Disposal Company for solid waste, yard debris and recycling services. And repealing ordinance 1383, 1469, and 1527. I'll take a presentation from staff on this.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, city council. We're very fortunate in Gladstone to have an excellent agreement with our garbage hauling company, which is B and B disposal Gladstone. They had come to me several months ago and asked if the city would be amenable to changing our current franchise agreement in far as the expiration date. Typically, the franchise agreement has been a 20-year agreement. It's due to expire at the end of 2026. They had asked if we could do 10-year reoccurring expiration dates on this. And primarily the reason for that is because that is what Oregon City has in their contract and also Clackamas County. And this would really help them in planning for their capital outlay and in the future of the equipment that they can purchase to do that. So the city attorney has prepared some language in section eight that is in your packet. We provided you a red line version of that. And if you have questions of Chad, he can go over that. But while we were also amending this ordinance, there are some housekeeping areas in there as well, as you will see in section 4.6, 5.1.4, section 10.4, 12.01, 1212, and 13.1. I also wanted to call to your attention that I had a conversation with Counselor Blough who had concerns about in section eight, which is nothing that we have proposed to amend with the use of the word church and whether or not we could have a more broader definition of that so that we weren't discriminating against any type of religion. So I brought this to attention to the city attorney Jacobs and Will, who's, Will and Pam, who are also here tonight. And I'm going to have Chad go over a little bit of what he proposes in that section, if this is something that the council would like to go forward with.
All right, Chad, we'd appreciate your comments.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. So as, as some of you who are on council may recall, we actually worked on this section a year or so ago related to providing services for major events like the, the ice storm that the city experienced. And we, we made some changes to this section to sort of clarify when free service would be provided to the city and when it wouldn't. And at that point in time, we had a discussion internally with staff related to the term church and whether we should be amending that language then for the exact reasons that are being discussed tonight. And at that point in time, we realized that the term church is actually used throughout the municipal code in multiple sections in the development code, in the transient lodging tax, and a whole bunch of different sections. We use the term church without really defining it. And so at that point in time, we thought it may make sense just to hold off and do a wholesale review of the municipal code and actually amend the entire code at once and just sort of, you know, repeal and replace that language throughout the entire code instead of doing it piecemeal. And so that's why we didn't do it then. And that's honestly why we didn't propose doing it at this point in time. And there was also a belief, you know, for better or worse, that there wasn't necessarily a huge rush because at that point in time there was no known religious places of worship within the city that weren't churches. So, you know, at that point in time, we said that let's put this on to do less, you know, as we get through stuff, let's, let's do a wholesale amendment to the code. Recognizing that that sometimes is not always the best approach. And sometimes it's better to sort of just say, okay, we, we recognize this. We don't need, we're working on this amendment right now. We don't need to keep this language in there. We can go ahead and amend it now. We did work on some language earlier today with the city administrator and with Will and Pam. And so what we could do, if you wanted to, is we could take the language in section eight and change the term churches to places of worship. And then we could add a new definition. And I would just propose adding a new subsection 2.6.5 instead of trying to renumber everything, just add a new sort of half section in there to define places of worship to mean any location owned by a religious organization and open to the public to, for persons to regularly assemble for the purpose of worship such as a church, a synagogue, a temple or a mosque. And I can certainly share that precise language. You know, if you wanted to amend the ordinance to include that language. Everyone, staff, our office and the haulers were all fine with this language if you want to move forward tonight. Or if you wanted to hold off and just utilize that language later on and do the wholesale amendment to the municipal code. And sort of give us direction to, you know, expedite that process. We can do it then as well. So it's really up to you what you prefer, you know. It's, you know, there's, I don't think anyone objects to the idea of, of what's being discussed. And the last thing I'll just add is certainly if there are places of worship that, you know, come about within the city that are not defined as a church, whether it's a temple or mosque or something else like that, we would absolutely apply the law in the same way. You know, we can't discriminate based on, you know, what religion is being practiced. So even though the term says church within the code, that's not how neither we nor the hauler would apply the code in that situation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or take some direction about how you want to proceed tonight.
All right, Counselor Blough, you raised the question, so I'll let you ask the question.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all of that reworking of the language. I think it's important. Since this is before us tonight, that we include those, that language, broader language and definition. My other concern with it was which I didn't feel was quite addressed was a more like what is to prevent somebody, for instance, from declaring their house a church? You know, would they gather there once a, you know, once a week for, you know, religious studies and, you know, and religion? And therefore they get the, you know, discount or free garbage service. Like I would like something that I, I know that there are tax codes that, that churches need to apply for, you know, like a 501(c) for charitable organizations. And maybe we could include some of that language in there as well.
Yeah. So the, the way we tried to address that, and I read that definition kind of quickly. So maybe I'll read it a little more slowly this time. Is we tried to address that in a couple of different ways. But in the definition, we first said that it's a location owned by a religious organization. So the religious organization would have to be exactly what you're talking about, a 501(c) type of organization, not just, you know, an individual who wants to hold services in their residence. Then we also require that it be open to the public. Two persons to regularly assemble primarily for the purposes of religious worship. So, you know, it can't just be a person's residence where they're inviting their friends over. It has to be open to the public. And it has to be open to the public primarily for the purposes of religious worship. So it can't be, you know, someone's house that they're opening up on Sundays because they're using that house primarily as a residence and not as a place of worship. And so that's how we tried to address those exact issues.
And would that also include, for instance, a religious school? Like, you know, is that also included under that definition if it's owned by a religious organization and regularly?
Yeah. If the school is part of the church itself, then it was just like it would be included today, it would be included there. But they have a separate, you know, school that's just a religiously sponsored school. It would not be included. And I believe that's how we apply the code today.
All right. Counselor Labonte, you had a question or comment?
Yes. And if, I may please ask, how does the state handle the wording church in state law and does it come up at this state level with changing it to House of Worship?
I'm not aware that the state deals with this issue, certainly not within the context of solid waste management. You know, when we do these sort of solid waste management, it's done at the local level. It's not, there's no sort of statewide franchises that are granted for solid waste. It's all delegated to the local level.
The question is, is that, I mean, the word church used in state law or has it been, has that been replaced with place of worship?
That, that's honestly not something I've.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
To be clear, the exemption of churches is not a universal policy among all people who do, who are in this business. There are some cities who don't make that exemption and, and we are one. And I assume this has been, this exemption has been going on for a long time. It's not something we recently added, which is why maybe the language might not be as inclusive as we might think about today. But, you know, it, it, it's been. But, you know, it's been in our, in our, in our practice here in this city for some time. Counselor Garlington?
I'm just gonna proceed on the side of caution and say, I think that, while I think that the language could definitely use some work, if that's what we're looking to do, to change that tonight is not something I want to just say, yeah, let's do that without seeing it written.
Okay, Chad, you gave us a clear explanation of the language and the reasoning behind it, and I'm comfortable with including that. But if the question is on, on the timing, if we adopt it without this language, can we kind of do so with an internal understanding that we'll take care of it in the future? I get Counselor Garlington's point, we usually like to have written language in front of us. And so a- as far as the two alternatives, what would be the downside of adopting it as written and then coming back to it later?
So there's really no downside, it's really a policy call for you all. As I said, when we apply the code, to the extent that such a place of worship would exist in the city, we would apply the code to them equally to churches. So I don't know that there's a downside per se in waiting. If you did want to move forward tonight, there are a couple of options that we could present to you. One is, you know, Jackie has this, this language in writing, so you could print it out and present it to you if you wanted to look at it to actually amend it tonight. The other thing we could do is we could do just a first reading tonight, we could have someone vote no, so it's not unanimous, and do a second reading next month. And then we could have that amended language in front of you next month as well. So there's, there's a couple of options for how you want to proceed. Or like I said at the beginning, if you just want to wait until we do a wholesale change, you want to give us direction to expedite that project, we could certainly expedite that project. The only issue with that project is there will be some amendments to the development code, so that means we've got to go through the whole land use process and giving notice to DLCD and going through the planning commission. So it'll take a little bit longer, but, you know, as I said, I don't think there's a real negative impact on the application of this code in that interim. So it's really a hundred percent a policy call for you all to make.
Okay, we've been given some options, any comments, reactions to what Chad has said?
May I ask how, any idea approximately how much time that might take, how much office time we would be looking at to switch them all out?
It's really not a lot of staff time, it's, I think the amendments themselves are pretty simple to make, but you, as you may recall, under the state planning codes, you have to give thirty-five notices to DLCD before you can make any tax amendments to the zoning code. You have to have a public hearing, which also requires notice, that has to then go before the planning commission, and then we have to bring it all in front of you all. So there will be a little bit of staff time and effort and just time generally as we wait these waiting periods.
All right, so what do you think of approving it as it is tonight with the understanding that maybe we don't do it with a unanimous vote, come back, take care of the language for this particular contract at a future meeting, and then work in the more general language, the more complicated process later in the year?
And I just, I want to say that I, I think, you know, Gladstone Disposal does a great job for the city. It's, it's mostly, I'm not, you're like, I think this is a great contract, all of those other things. It was really just, I felt like somebody needed to say something about the more generalized, you know, places of worship rather than just specifically churches. I'm happy to vote no.
Okay.
If we can do this again next time, but I just also wanted to let you guys know that it's not that I'm opposed to this contract at all.
All right, is there any other, and we'll keep that in mind, are there any other concerns or questions about the contract itself and what we've proposed to, to change or what we're continuing to have as part of it? The ten-year thing, it's a little bit different than we would think of. It's not ten years starting from today, but that each year it renews for the ten, ten years going forward. And you said that kept us on the same schedule as the other cities served by this company. And as we heard from Greg Geist earlier, long-range capital planning is much easier when you have a very clear idea of where you are going forward in relation to the communities that you serve. And that's, if that's your motivation, I see that as a very important reason for making this change. Counselor Garlington?
I think my, I'm gonna ask my question after we finish this.
Okay. Well, you, you want to ask it after we've taken the vote, or?
I just was wondering, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around everything that Chad is saying that needs to be changed with this. I know that with our charter, some of the, some of our charter changes also took other changes and other documents to make sure that everything was streamlined. So by doing this, how many documents are you thinking need to be changed in order to make it all cohesive?
When you say documents, do you mean how many different sections of the municipal code?
Correct.
You know, I, I honestly, I did a search again to refresh my recollection earlier today, and I'm giving you a guesstimate here, so don't hold me to this, but I'd say there were probably about fifteen to twenty sections of the municipal code that maybe used the word church, but it wasn't, wasn't really substantial. It's, you know, just using church in the sort of common method of using that term instead of place of worship. And so I think the actual process of amending it is not that difficult.
Particularly if, if the way we do it is by having in a definitions section, we would need to change the term where it exists now as church, but we don't need to redefine it in all of those dozen or so places that it appears. We could define it once and then use it in the other sections. Okay, all right, well, that will be a future project, I think, that's the sense I'm getting from the council. So is there, would someone like to make a motion regarding this action tonight? I believe there is a suggested motion on page ten dash two.
I'll do this.
Counselor Garlington?
I move that the city approve ordinance five, one five four one and ordinance adopting new terms and conditions for the continuation of an exclusive franchise. Oh my gosh, all of a sudden, my reading contact, sorry. An exclusive franchise granted to the Gladstone Disposal Company for solid waste, yard debris, and recycling services, and repealing ordinance one three eight six, one four six nine, and one five two seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and I think that first ordinance that we're appealing is one three eight three, just, just for the record. Oh, I know, yeah. Happens to all of us. And would you like to add anything tonight? You, we're grateful that you've come here tonight to, to present this to us, anything that you feel, okay, I just want to give you that opportunity, because, because you've been here, I think, to answer any questions we might have, and I think we're, we're good with the contract part. So any further discussion before we take a vote? And this is an ordinance, so if it is a unanimous vote, it's enacted as written, and if it is not unanimous vote, we'll bring it back next month, and maybe there'll be a refinement to it. Okay, that was your hint. Okay. Haley, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Blough?
No.
Counselor Labonte?
Yes.
Counselor Corbett?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, the motion passes six to one, it's not unanimous, so we'll bring it back for a second reading next month, and we instruct staff to provide some of the language that Chad has indicated he's prepared for this.
And I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate everybody's willingness to move on this.
You're welcome. I think reflected in, in some of the proclamations you read tonight is that a community is strengthened when it is inclusive of all its members, and no one feels left out or excluded by anything that we do. And so I'm glad you brought it up, and I'm glad we have the opportunity to address it. All right, next item on our regular agenda involves our making a request to the Clackamas Fire District to annex the city into it, into the district. Now, this would be subject to voter approval, so staff, are you ready to present to us on this side?
Yes, I am, thank you, Mayor. And before I get started, I just want to say that I'm glad that Chief Schmerber escorted our cadets out of the room, because the fire chief is present, and I'm afraid they might have become firefighters by the end of the night.
Not a chance.
But I think what we call this part of the process that we're in with, with Clackamas Fire is, will you accept the rose? I don't watch The Bachelor, but I know that we're going to probably go through a process of determining whether or not we are going to get married. And so, as you know, we've been involved for many months now in public engagement, open houses. We did a webinar last week in providing information to the community and why finding sustainable fire and emergency services is so important. We've had a contract with Clackamas Fire since two thousand and twenty-two, they've done an outstanding job of providing service with us, they're committed to staying in the Gladstone Fire Station downtown Portland Avenue. And so the first step in that process is for the city council to approve a resolution, even asking Clackamas Fire Board if they will accept us into their district. Next Monday night, the Fire Board then will consider accepting Gladstone, and if they do that, then I would come back to you at the July eighth meeting with a resolution asking you to refer it to the November ballot so that the residents can decide whether or not they would like us to annex into Clackamas Fire. The city attorney has been involved with drafting the language, it's been a partnership with Clackamas Fire and their staff. And so what you have before you tonight is the resolution proposing annexation of the city into Clackamas Fire District, and I just want to be very clear that we are not annexing into the district, we're just asking them if they would accept us.
Thank you for that explanation, because it probably would not be very clear just from the wording of the title of this to people. So are there any questions from members of the council, Counselor Garlington?
I don't have any questions, I'd just like to say that, you know, for more than two years, former Counselor Alexander and I sat in meetings with people from the Clackamas Fire District and Administrator Betts, I think Chief Schmerber even sat in one time to one of our meetings, can't recall. And every meeting we had was transparent, enlightening, made us feel like we had made the right decision from the very beginning. And I just want the people in Gladstone to know that this council, the former council that we had on here, and probably some people even before that, this has been on the minds of people for a long time to ensure the utmost safety of the people in this city. And bar none, that's what I'm all about with this. And I, I one hundred percent believe in my heart that it is a step in the right direction, it is a leap in the right direction without even thinking twice. So thank you to you. Administrator Betts, I know you've done a lot of work on this, and I appreciate the time that you've spent getting to know Clackamas Fire and allowing them to gain your trust. And that comes to us knowing that you have that utmost trust as well. So again, I, we are going in the right direction, and thank you to all the parties involved.
Counselor Garlington, thank you for that. I, I want to express my appreciation to you and to former Counselor Alexander, who happens to be here tonight, for the role that you played in, in that oversight process and keeping the rest of the council well informed on issues and concerns that you had in working through that, that transparent, you know, connection with the district. Counsel, former Counsel Robert also showed a great interest in our fire department and the staff, he remembers people's names better than I ever did because he got to know them personally, and, you know, it helped me have the same level of confidence. So I'm glad that we're moving, taking this step tonight. Other counselors, have any comments or questions?
May I just, some clarification from the chief, we had a conversation at our last meeting, our joint session about this. And I know that, you know, the fire station downtown is, you know, it's part of Gladstone. However, I think that we can sit back and maybe look at a map and say, maybe five, ten years out, that's not for the overall safety of the district, because in joining the district now, we are beyond Gladstone, we're part of a bigger family. That, you know, there are locations where that fire station would possibly move to. How, how many years out might that be, if at all? Because I, because I know one of the-
Ninety-nine, at least ninety-nine.
Well, I know that's the lease, and I'm curious as to what happens when the, when the lease, if in fact you do move and that lease expires, I know, I believe the building comes back into our possession. I was just kind of wondering from, from, you know, to hear it, if possible, from you just about your thoughts on the future of the Gladstone.
Chief, if you could go forward and give us, give us an answer, I, I think we discussed this a little bit at one of our work sessions, but I'd like to hear it again for, for those who share the same concern.
I love it, I love it, thank you so much. First, I just would like to start out saying how much I love being your fire chief. And Jackie, I do, right? As far as the marriage, you got me? Okay, so it is truly, truly an honor to be able to serve side by side with Jackie and Chief Schmerber and each and every one of you. It is an honor to be your fire chief, and I'm proud to say that I'm your fire chief. As far as your question, back to that conversation, we use quantifiable data, and we use a program called Dark Horse, and really what it shows right now is that where it's stationed is the best spot. Now, as we grow and as the areas grow, that, that could change, but to be able to tell you that there is a fifteen years, twenty years, seven years, I don't think it's realistically seven years, but I, I don't have a firm date, because it really truly depends on what's going to happen in the next fifteen to twenty years with urban sprawl, urban growth. But as it sits right now, the, the location of that station is really strategic, and it, and it was, it was placed in the right spot. So I like Jackie's answer, ninety-nine years. So, but yes, to say that, that it would never be moved, I will never say that to you, just because we constantly are looking at run data, quantifiable data, not my gut instinct, we're looking at analytics that show where population's growing, response times and all of that, because that's the number one thing in emergencies, is time, time matters to us. And so wherever that best time is to best serve the citizens of Gladstone, that's what we, that's what we aim for. Thank you, thank you.
I, I think it's been great that that location has served Gladstone for as many years as it has, even as the city of Gladstone grew and changed and annexed new land into it, and that now that we're partnering with Clackamas Fire, its proximity to McLaughlin, its proximity and easy access to two oh five continues to make it a good site even for the broader region. So we're very fortunate, and I, like Counselor Labonte, hopes that it stays part of the system and continues to be, you know, well positioned to serve the community. Would someone like to make a motion on this agenda item? Bottom of page eleven two.
I, I move to approve resolution twelve four zero, a resolution of the city of Gladstone requesting approval by Clackamas Fire District to annex the city into the district effective July one, two thousand and twenty-six, contingent upon voter approval and affirming a debt management plan whereby city property owners will pay only the district's permanent rate.
All right, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Counselor Mitchell. There is reference in here to paying only the district's permanent rate. Any further discussion regarding the, the tax rates or any other element of this? We focused primarily on the procedural matter, but, okay, all right. Haley, will you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Blough?
Yes.
Counselor Labonte?
Yes.
Counselor Corbett?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, so resolution twelve forty has passed unanimously, seven zero, and we look to the fire district to respond in kind, we hope. And thank you, Chief, for being here and answering questions and helping with this, with this important step. And for people who have the agenda or looking at it online, there are, there is a PowerPoint here that talks about the benefits of annexation. If you wanted a little more information than we shared this evening, because we've already talked about this in a work session and didn't go into as much detail tonight.
May I just comment?
Yes, comment from Counselor Labonte.
And just regarding the fire district, a look at the map shows exactly why this is even proposed, because Gladstone is in the middle of pretty much your district. So sensible, thank you.
All right, Administrator Betts, is there any business carried forward?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Haley, do we have requests for business from the audience tonight?
Yes, we do have- Yes, we do have one request.
All right, who's the request?
Greg Alexander.
All right, Mr. Alexander, welcome back.
Oh, thank you.
You have three minutes. We'll get a timer up there and you've got the mic on, so.
Yeah, I wish I didn't, I wish I didn't have to come back or do this, but circumstances dictated. There've been some recent events that have come to light that need to be clarified and corrected. Mayor Milch and Vanessa made false accusations against me when I told them, by all means, on social media. When I told them, by all means, hold me accountable, they couldn't. I'd like to thank Councillor Levante for addressing the rhetoric on social media during the school bond. My mostly good-informed dialogue takes place, seems to always get interrupted by Mayor Milch and Vanessa Huckabee by their constant arguing with community members. While most of the dialogue is civil and just community members voicing their concerns, however, these two will attack, belittle, insult, berate, bully, harass, anything they can do if you do not agree with them and their unfounded statements that they can't back up. They even go so far as to call other community members liars. They were elected to represent the whole community but have proven they are only concerned with a small group of their friends that agree with them. Vanessa is always talking about DEI while harassing and calling Hispanic people liars on social media. Even worse, instead of trying to do her job, she is posting these angry accusations on her phone during the city council meeting. The mayor and Vanessa have posted that they don't think the private property is a good use of police time. The theft of private property is a good use of police time. One citizen posted that she wasn't sure we even had a mayor anymore, to which Michael replied, "I try to fly under the radar." What community leader wants to hide from the citizens? Two years ago, he wanted everyone on the dais in the name of transparency to go down the line and explain their SEI statements. So it's very funny to me that he didn't want to do that this year with the new councillors. But maybe that's because this year, now that he's the mayor, some of his household income is from employment with the Gladstone Public Works. Ethics violation, we'll find out. These two are out of touch with this community as you can see from the results of the school bond measure failing. They should spend more time connecting with this community in person instead of just being keyboard cowards and trying to divide the community even further. At the least, they are hypocrites. Or better yet, they should resign. The culture they have created has citizens scared to comment on social media or put signs in their yard for fear of retaliation for Michael and Vanessa's little group. Everything I've just stated is true and can be proven. Please know, moving forward, if you make any further false accusation or statements about any citizen, I will come forward, confront and hold you accountable. I also have a proclamation on a great subject, bullying in all its forms, something that you two do on social media. And then Vanessa will also brag about being the council president. I think the only reason she's nominated is because she'll regurgitate anything Michael says. These two obviously didn't understand the oath they were sworn to. Many people think Gladstone deserves better than these two. I want to submit this for evidence. And I suggest everybody on the council take a look so you can see how your mayor and councillor treat the community members.
All right, thank you. Next, we have business from the council. This is an opportunity for council members to share items of their concern or involvement in the community. I will start down at my left with Councillor Garland.
Well, I've had a very busy 30 days. I've sat in a lot of meetings and left my notes at home and will have to send them to Haley Ritten because I raced out of the house in a hurry. I appreciate all the work everybody's doing on the fire bond. I appreciate everybody in this community and the work they're doing. I would like to say congratulations to all the kids who are being promoted and/or graduating. I've seen a lot of really fun videos from a lot of the schools, from the schools showing where the kids are getting excited about moving forward. And as we always say, you know, at the first part of school, to watch out for the kids because the kids are going back to school. I want to bring that, the other side and say, watch out for the kids because they're running all over the place now again. So slow down, Gladstone, it's not that hard to do. I have been practicing to drive at under 35, under, somewhere between 30 and 35 on oat field. Pure discretion here. And I would have to say I've felt a little bit pushed at times, but it's okay. Slow down, it's okay.
All right, thank you. Councillor Corbett, welcome tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to share?
I just want to say thank you. This is a great opportunity. I'm really looking forward to serving with each of you. And yeah, that's it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councillor Levante.
Yeah, going slower is good. Reduces your stopping distance, reduces the force of impact, helps seatbelts work better, makes pedestrians a little bit less likely to get hit. And if they get hit, it's less injuries to them, so thanks, Mindy. I'm a nerd, I'd like to go on and on about that, but maybe not right now. The, just my one comment really, in studying the Chautauqua Festival and learning about one speaker in particular. And I don't know about this gentleman's deep background. So I'm not sure if this person has done horrific things or not, okay? But just that his lecture that he traveled around for decades is my understanding. But Russell Conwell and his lecture, Acres of Diamonds. And I'll be real short with it, but his idea for this lecture came from this story of when he was traveling, he was on this adventure and the guide, and many of you may know this story, but the guide was sharing a story about this farmer who was content. He was happy, he had family, he had a nice farm. He had fruit orchards, everything was good. A traveler came and said, hey, you know, what do you know about diamonds? And he's like, well, I don't know about diamonds. And the traveler tells him all about diamonds. And he's thinking all night and he's like, man, I'm not wealthy. I'm not happy. I need diamonds. So he decides, he gets up the next morning, he asks where he can find the diamonds. And the gentleman's like, diamonds? I'll go look for them, I guess. So he leaves his family and he's going to go find diamonds and become rich. And it doesn't work out so well. And at the base of the Hercules statue, he jumps into the ocean, as the story goes. And the people who took over occupation, took the farm over that he lost and his family had to leave, sure as junk. Guess what happens? Is a little stream in the river, a little stream through his farm, they find a rock, they don't know what it is. Years later, someone's like, that's a diamond. They're like, what? We have diamonds? And this story goes on and on. The point of this lecture that Russell Conway then gives is the idea of the diamonds in your backyard, acres of diamonds, as in. And this is really a call for entrepreneurs and for the local business people and for your neighbor who has a landscaping company or you name it. The idea where within an acre, within a few acres, you know, we potentially have the ability to support, to support ourselves, to have a career, to live within your community, which in some ways ties into the concept of, let's say, the town center and things along those lines. So I just want to give a shout out to Russell Conwell. It's a long lecture, it's a great book. Perhaps you read it or just find some snippets, Acres of Diamonds. But I found it to be quite interesting and relevant for this time and kind of what we would like for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Blough?
Let's see, so this month I attended the very first community market, which is behind Safeway over by High Rocks. It is the first Wednesday of each month. And I got amazing strawberries and this fantastic loaf of bread. So I recommend everybody keep that. And it's Wednesdays, which doesn't conflict with any of the other surrounding farmers markets. So go them. Let's see, what else do I have? Janelle Bynum has a number of upcoming town halls, which you can find posted on her information page, including some virtual ones. So if you can't make town halls in person. Let's see, I also wanted to talk a little bit about Metro's community projects. It's nature and neighborhoods grants. And it's a community choice grant. There are a number of Gladstone approved suggestions for these. And so they're going to be sort of winnowed down a little bit. And then everybody has a chance to vote at the end of the summer. And so if you're interested, I think it's a really interesting read to see, you know, what our community members feel like would be additions to our parks areas. And some of them are like a non-public access, but a wildlife improvement area. There's some stuff down by Meldrum Bar. And so it's really an interesting, interesting read. And we'll get more information towards the end of the summer. I will probably circle back on that. And then I also wanted to say that Wednesday, June 18th, at the Gladstone Community Center, 1:00 PM, there is a lecture on York of Lewis and Clark Expedition. And if you've got a free Wednesday, then I would recommend that you try to attend that. I know I'm gonna. That's everything I have.
Councillor Mitchell?
So just some equipping events to tie into our proclamations that we had at the beginning of the meeting. Also reiterating the one that's in Gladstone on the 19th at Max Patterson Park from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Oregon City is having their Juneteenth celebration on June 21st at 2:00 PM at End of the Oregon Trail interpretive center. I believe the first music of the Greens is supposed to be this week on June 13th at Max Patterson X6 PM. Milwaukee Pride Celebration is happening June 21st at 11:00 AM at Scott Park. Coming up, Clackamas County Libraries and Oak Lodge Friends of the Library will be at Oak Grove Festival on June 28th at 11:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And then finally, Gladstone Library Foundation is still seeking members for their library foundation. Thank you.
Councillor Huckabee?
Thank you. Well, kind of some repetition here, Juneteenth and Pride Month, obviously we know is this month. I just want to say that I'm really happy that we have this proclamation process now. And it took a lot of work and a lot of tears to get there. I also wanted to acknowledge that this is the bare minimum for our city. It's just saying, hey, we see you, we acknowledge you. And I'm really looking forward to coming years where we can catch up with our surrounding neighbors and having events via the city for both celebrations. I'm going to touch a little bit more on Gladstone's 2nd Juneteenth. I just want to say thank you to the community members who are donating their time and their dollars and sharing their networks in order for these events to be successful. It was a very small group this year. It was a little bit larger last year. So I'm looking forward to being able to meet with neighbors in the park and just discuss Juneteenth. I wanted to also throw out an invitation for neighbors with lived experiences to join a planning committee for next year for Pride and for Juneteenth. We really need those ideas and thoughts. I want to thank Gabby for keeping us on our toes and calling out language that should be more inclusive. It's in direct correlation with Council DEI and belonging goals. I appreciate that. Oh, I have the privilege of sitting on the planning committee for LOC's annual conference in October. And to our library people, I recommended a tour. It's going to be in Portland. I recommended a tour of the Oak Lodge, Milwaukee and Gladstone libraries and got some excitement, so we'll see if it happens. But yeah, there was a lot of interest in that, so that's it.
Thank you. Well, speaking of libraries, I was appointed to serve as the Urban Mayor's Representative for Clackamas County on a new task force that is having its first meeting tomorrow to look at our countywide library system and check on the financial status, the equity as far as how it's supported by urban communities, rural communities, incorporated cities and unincorporated areas of the county. There's a lot of issues for us to go over. And I look forward to beginning that process to come up with some ways. It's one of those things that reminds me of how in Clackamas County and having the Fire District here tonight, we do rely on one another as communities. We don't do it all alone as a city any longer. We are in connection with others. And tomorrow, tomorrow morning, I have a meeting of the C4 Metro Committee Subcommittee of Clackamas County Coordinating Committees. And on the agenda that day is some recommendations for allocation of what's called regional flexible fund allocations. That's monies that are going to transportation projects that improve the region, relatively smaller scale transportation projects. But one of them, which we have a potential of getting funded, a good potential, I think, is the proposed Trolley Trail Bridge going over the Clackamas River at the end of Portland Avenue. And that's a project that has been a long time in the works and discussed. I see former Mayor Stempel here tonight. She had a big role in getting that started and getting some grants to just get us thinking about that as a community upwards of, what, 10 years ago, I think now? And to have reached this stage is very exciting. So I am hopeful that that will connect us to, you know, the rest of the Trolley Trail and across the river to Oregon City. And once again, an opportunity for us to be part of the region effectively on a transportation level. And hopefully, because that's coming right out of our newly approved town center area, also contribute to the economic development of that area as well. I'll be attending the Gladstone School Board meeting tomorrow night. And I want to let the rest of the council know. The C4 Group has its annual planning retreat in July, the weekend of July 25th and 26th. All council members are eligible to attend that. And so if that's something you'd be interested in doing, try to get the information from us. And we have a registration form that we can have you fill out if you'd like to participate. They will be looking at housing-related issues, transportation-related issues. I brought up transportation recently, and it's taken a long time during this legislative session for a final, for a bill on transportation to finally come forward. But I hope that you will see in your emails some summaries of that and information and that if you want to speak to your legislators about what you think would be good for the City of Gladstone. And the cities in the county are saying that we need funding at the state level because the procedure has been in the past that 50% of that funding goes to ODOT, but 30% to counties and 20% to cities. And to maintain that 50, 30, 20 split means that cities will have an adequate amount to address issues like potholes, crosswalk safety, speed limits, all those things that you have to do at the local level with transportation. So keep informed on that issue and follow it. It's unfortunate that kind of got so late in the session for that to finally come up. But I think that there has been some negotiating going on and hopefully we'll see some progress on that issue. So I want to thank, I had the opportunity last week, a second time this year, I've done mock interviews with high school students and got to meet one of our Gladstone cadets. And I won't say who it was, but I will say that one of the results of that was really understanding and having appreciation for the generosity of the time that our staff put in to helping these young people understand the importance of the relationships that police officers have with the community and the role that you play in helping resolve conflict potentially and other things. I thought it was more than just, you know, what do you do? Where do you go? What's your equipment like? But it was getting, it got to people at a deeper depth than that. So I appreciate your staff, you're taking on that project. And I'm hoping that in the future, we'll continue to have a lot of young people who want to take, take part in that. So that's all I have for tonight. We have, as always, the planning document to help you look ahead to future events and future meetings. We have a special meeting to adopt the budget on June 24th. And we have our next regular city council meeting on July 8th. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Huckabee and seconded by Councillor Mitchell. Haley, will you call the roll, please?
Councillor Huckabee?
Yes.
Councillor Mitchell?
Yes.
Councillor Blough?
Yes.
Councillor Levante?
Yes.
Councillor Corbett?
Yes.
Councillor Garland?
Yes.
Mayor Milch?
Yes, we are adjourned at 8:00 PM. Thank you.